Definitely understand why if it's like a, a single family or duplex, an exemption from the design excellence overlay would apply. But in the case of the project that I'm involved with in my work world, it structurally could look very similar to multifamily housing development, but it's a TED and why should my project be exempt?
Because the, the Teds with the amendments that we made earlier this year, they're viewed as single dwelling or townhouse projects. And they have a series of design standards already within the zoning code as well. Like, I think it's section 140 in the chapter 40. So because they already have standards and they, even though they may attach townhouses as many as eight together, they're all individual units. So that's why.
Follow-up question. So, Aiden, if I could work my mic. The reason I ask is because there obviously are incentives that come along with this, these design excellence corridors, including parking reductions and allowing multifamily developments to count off-street parking as being a part of that project. And it just would be nice to be able to broaden those incentives for developing housing in these corridors.
Well, I'm, I think both through the housing policy work that is going on and their research on zoning tools that we can look at to assist housing development, we may get there. I mean, I think it is integrated and it's really tied to parking, you're right. And then the hope is to also do a more comprehensive, excuse me, assessment of our parking chapter and take that on and look at it at a, at a broader sense in terms of right sizing the parking requirements for all uses.
Further questions, Mr. Hess? Ms. Ramos? Ms. Sarah?
Nope.
I was hoping that you could respond to the comment that Mr. Gray made about the minimums as it relates to the example of an existing building that doesn't, might not have the infrastructure to support the weight of the bricks. Can you just walk me through how that would work?
So, the minute you start to modify that building, sorry, soft cutting window with example, day.
The minute you start to modify that building, you are in the system in some fashion. You're not just in maintenance and repair. You're actually doing adaptive reuse or redevelopment or something else. So, yes, you would, you would trigger the standards. I think there's been a modest misrepresentation of the way that the material standards apply. They, in that particular case, I think if you were just changing out a window, you'd be unlikely to apply the material standards to the building. So to what extent a facade change, you know, what extent would really trigger something? The normal trigger for bringing a non-conformity into conformance is typically, you know, 50% or more improvement. So it kind of depends. If that building was, you know, of such low value that, that just putting a new tenant in was, you know, doubling the, the value of the building, then yes, you would, you would have to bring it up into compliance.
A couple of other points to consider when you're in a, I mean, these are, especially when it's an existing building, pretty unique situations and I think we're trying to be sensitive to that. That's why when we talk about the requirement of natural materials, it lists at least three baselines. One is wood, the other is brick, and the other is stone. So somebody can look at their existing situation and say, there's no way I can construct the ledge to hang new brick on my facade down at the base, but wood could work instead. But that's also the reason why we include an optional other list of materials. So it seems like it's a great example of considering another material and we would be looking at that within our staff review. Doesn't have to be sent up to a design board or anything. It's the, it's the opportunity, it's the place where you can make a case because the structure may not be supportive to consider something else. And that is what is stated in the ordinance.
It's 1115 and, you know, all of the cylinders might not be running. My question is, when, if, if a property in this, any of these areas were to change hands, how is the new property owner going to learn about these standards? I could go on, but...
If you come to pull a building permit, they're going to look at your zoning.
But if you didn't have a building permit?
If you don't need a building permit, then none of this applies.
Yeah.
So if you go to saw a whole new window in, you need a building permit. So you'll be in. But if it's just, if it's just reuse of the building and you're going from, you know, bookstore to vintage store or something like that, to office, to, you know, something that's considered similar, it doesn't, doesn't have new water, it doesn't have new, you know, kitchen, doesn't have new, any of those things, there'd be no impact of the new standards on that existing building.
Ms. Jones, questions? Mr. DeBary?
So I have a question that revolves a little bit around cost as Mr. Gray brought up. We have acknowledged that through this, that there could be additional costs associated with it, but we've also been pretty careful and smart about how we've geographically designated the parcels that this would apply to. So I'd like for you to try to address that relationship between cost and the sort of prominent nature of the downtown and some of the other corridors and what those trade-offs might be for those locations.
And if you remember from the chart, all of downtown is going to get design reviewed. So everything that's in color on the map on the left is going to get design reviewed under the design excellence program. The corridor type one, which is the purple, so Brooks and Russell. And then if you see the circles that look a bit like pie tins in the distance, those are the nodes. Those are also treated with the highest level of scrutiny. So purple corridor, nodes, and downtown are seeing the highest level of scrutiny. They also, if you look at the actual standards, they have the highest material standards. They have the strongest rules about pedestrianism because those are seen, they were selected by the community as the key locations for that kind of conversation. So, so that, that's where that happens. By the time you get to corridor types three and four, and you'll have to help me with where those ones are, examples of three and four.
Well, this is, just for a second, this is a map that was an earlier one and we did combine some typologies. So what we think of as corridor, the yellow and the orange are our neighborhood scale type of streets, it's corridor typology two now. And then the lighter red is typology three, and those are more of our gateway types of streets. The spacing of the parcels are a little bit bigger. And then the final typology is four, which is the teal color, and that's most of Reserve Street.
So what happens as you move down through that hierarchy, and let's go to the newer map so you can see what she was talking about, because we did simplify them. So here's the newer map. As you go down through that hierarchy, things change. For example, in the downtown, you have the strongest building presence along the street edge, and that's the percentage build two. When you get out to the outer lying places, those numbers shrink. And actually, in the final ones, there's, it allows building between the parking, parking between the building and the street, which is not allowed in the downtown area. So the rules get simpler and simpler as you move down through the hierarchy. And that is definitely going to impact the, the cost of construction there. So the core of downtown is not the place to try to build the cheapest building in the city. If you want to build less expensive buildings, you go further out on the corridors, or you choose one of the corridors that's not affected by this. And if you want to do a residential project, you can do it totally outside of these in portions that might be zoned multifamily along these corridors that aren't even included in design excellence. So there are places for those projects which are not impacted by these rules. The most impacted places are the nodes, the type one corridor, and the downtown area.
Ms. Armstrong?
Fully understand the need for regulatory instrument, but how do we incentivize keeping Missoula weird? Because this, there's no room here to incentivize people to do creative things. So...
So I'm from Austin, the happy home of...
I'm from Texas, too.
Yeah, happy home over the original weird. You can't build new weird. It doesn't really happen. Weird is typically old and creative reuse of old. I've been in your community to a Quonset hut coffee shop. It's a fabulous space, absolutely fabulous space. Would we build a brand-new coffee shop that shape and that scale and that size? It would be crazy expensive to do that. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm a fan of keeping you as weird as you can. That means set the underlying zoning to the right heights so that you don't replace all those things. But you can't have that old weird if that's, you know, shorter, older buildings with some character warehouses, Quonset huts, you know, whatever. You can't have that if you're zoning that area for six or eight stories because the six or eight stories can't afford to replace it. But if you zone it for three stories, a lot of it'll survive. We have great examples in Austin. We're blowing and going at a far higher rate than you are. And while people bemoan and wail, you know, over the loss of the weird in Austin, some of it is still there. And it is embedded in the fabric and it will likely stay there. Kind of depends on, on community willingness to support the businesses that are in it. That's the hardest part.
Well, Val, so I just want to hear from you, how your department is going to handle weird when weird comes in the door?
That's, I think that's why we've got this two-part system. You know, we heard from the community that they wanted it to stay, you know, that we wanted the diversity, we wanted the variability. But, so, so the idea with this is the standard set a base, a base minimum that's important for the message for everybody. But the guidelines are really going to be the thing that creates the nuance, the qualities, the character, the difference. And the flexibility through our internal variation system is, is the thing that's going to provide the responsiveness to, I've got a better way. I, I get what you're getting at and we have stronger intent statements now into both the standards as well as the guidelines that communicate the message. So somebody can say to us, I hear what you're saying, but I've got a, a new, better way. I mean, every building and every program is different and unique. And we know you need to be responsive to that program. You need to be responsive to the site. They're not the flat sites anymore as you're seeing. And so the system between those two things are really going to be the key thing. And it's going to be okay. It's okay not to, it's okay to consider varying. You know, sometimes it gets that sort of negative connotation, but that needs to be lifted to say, yeah, we're willing to, we want to hear and see the alternatives that somebody is proposing. I think getting used to the program is going to be a kind of a part of it, to early conversation, to that dialogue with the designers in the community, with the architects in the community. And just also remember, there's not, there's another way that we can be cookie cutter and that's that anywhere USA along some of our main corridors. And I think this is going to bring us the uniqueness that is, is contrary to that as well.
Further question. Seeing none, Mr. DeBary?
Would you like all three motions together or would you like to address them one at a time?
Why don't we take them one at a time?
Okay. So the first motion is, I recommend council adopt an ordinance amending Title 20 to revise Chapter 20.25 overlay districts, replacing the existing section of 20.25.080 slash D Downtown Overlay with Design Excellence Overlays generally and incorporate associated text with this newly named section and create two new overlay districts, Design Excellence Downtown Overlay, which is 20.25.081, and Design Excellence Corridor Overlay, which is 20.25.082. And amend existing sections, Design Review, 20.85.080, and the Design Review Board, 20.90.020 as amended with staff recommended changes.
That motion is in order, is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Mayor?
I do still have some concerns about this. I'm concerned about the effect that this might have on the ability to construct multifamily housing in these areas. As it's been discussed here tonight, the, the profit margin for multifamily is smaller than the commercial. And I mean, in our ward, I'm especially concerned about what this does to development on Third Street and South Avenue. This seems a little bit at odds with our desire to build more attainable housing. All that being said, I'm going to support the motion, but I would like to ask if we would consider having staff keeping a surprise over time about how this is proceeding. How many applications are we getting through this? What type of development? How many of those applications are just processed by staff and how many get kicked up to the Design Review Board level and what the outcomes are of those? So that's my request.
Further discussions? Ms. Jones?
I'll just speak once and it can count for all three. I sat in design sessions from the very beginning with this entire process and was very impressed with the thoughtful approach. And I think a lot of attention has actually been paid to Missoula as an individual community and our values here. To me, this entire project is basically designed to hopefully prevent offensive buildings from being built because we certainly had several of those in the last few years and there was a big community outcry. So we tried that, it didn't work too well. That's why we're doing this. And frankly, I think this is very thoughtful, very well thought out. Excellent people have done it and I'm very much in support of it. Having gone through the entire MERC process and then reading the hundreds of pages by the time this final product came through, I wish I had had this when we did the MERC because that is exactly what we were trying to accomplish, to see the very first drawings of the MERC and then where it is now. It came forward quite a bit. It was not the most graceful process when you have 12 people trying to negotiate and design a building without any background in that. But I do think it turned out much better than it would have been based on the very first proposal. But we were lucky in that situation that we had a very creative land use and planning committee chair and people worked very hard on that to find the leverage to get that to be a good building because we knew that was probably one of the best city blocks in all of the state of Montana. So I think this is a great project. I'm curious to see how it rolls out in the next couple of years and if we need to tweak it in some areas, that's what we'll do. It is not applying to the entire city. It's actually very specific corridors and areas. And yes, our entire downtown is, is within the parameters, but it's our downtown. We don't want offensive buildings going up in our downtown. So this is a two-year thoughtful approach. We're going to see how it rolls out. There's a lot of other areas to build in Missoula for people who don't want to be following this program.
Ms. Cravon-Losberg?
Thanks. Briefly, I'm supportive of the motion and the other ones as well. In addition to Ms. Jones' remarks, I'd point to the email we received from Lynn McCarthy with the Downtown Association and Business Improvement District and their support for this. I think more importantly than just their support for this, I would highlight their involvement from day one with the project and all throughout. And I know that there's been some concern about how responsive, you know, staff will be. And I think we've got a great example of how responsive they have been with those folks from the community who've invested time in participating in, and I've sat through some of those meetings and witnessed at firsthand, you know, listening, changing, tweaking, adjusting. And I think another great example of that is on the issue that LaValle brought up relative to the height changes in the memo of December 7th. You know, it's, it's great to see the input from Aaron Hanks from the architectural firm, really cogent explanation of these concerns with lots of supporting information and then seeing staff respond to those concerns the way he did. To me, that is exactly the kind of thing I point to and take some confidence from in terms of staff's ability to be responsive. And I'm sure that we will see this over time and will continue to be responsive as we move forward. So thanks a lot for all the work on this and I'm happy to support it.
Ms. Keres?
I just don't think that we can or should dictate taste. I share Julie Merritt's concerns with South Reserve, South Avenue, and Third. And it seems like almost 200-page documents lend themselves to the exact people we're trying to work against, those corporate America-type of companies that have a lot of people and enough money to spend the time necessary to address rules created. It seems to me that we may curtail the opportunity for small entrepreneurs, be that land and business owners, construction companies, or architects and engineers, to participate in these highly important spaces I'll be voting against.
Ms. Vasara?
I will be supporting all the recommended motions. I would like to thank our staff because I think that they have done an excellent job at marrying the right amount of guidelines and the right amount of requirements. I think that that will allow for sufficient room for being, remaining weird, although I do think that that is something that we as a community can continue to have within a really well-designed environment. I, I don't share the, the concerns that have been brought up because I do think that this can actually result in really good quality multifamily or affordable housing. I, I don't think that we need to necessarily think that applying design standards means that, or that having housing that's more affordable cannot look beautiful. So I, I'm in full support of this.
Ms. Ramos?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Like other council members, this comment is applicable to all the motions. First of all, I just want to say I appreciate the ear from Texas. I'm a big fan of Houston zoning policies. Unfortunately, those are not applicable here. But I am a big fan of the zoning changes, but the design excellence program, and I'm not trying to be overzealous in this, but the, the design excellence overlay is truly the stuff that my nightmares are made of. I absolutely, I, I appreciate your work on it, but I absolutely hate it. I, I hate the, the massive government control that's involved in it. I think it infringes on personal property rights. I don't think David Gray, I could say it any better than him, so I'm not going to try. I'm going to keep it short. It's late. I think it does deprive us of individuality. I think it enforces conformity. I think it raises the cost for businesses and the higher the cost for the business, the less they can pay their employees. Right now, Missoula is far behind other cities our size in Montana as far as wages go. So the more money they spend to make things look pretty, the less they can pay their employees, the less benefits they can offer those employees. Again, it raises the cost for housing, as Mr. Gray said. There's no way around that. As other council members have stated, they didn't think it was, it was necessarily contradictory to affordable housing to make things look pretty. Well, it is. And it's certainly contradictory to it to require all of these design standards, all the review processes, all the permits, all the fees, yada, yada, yada. It raises the cost of housing. This is completely a no barrier if, or this is a no-brainer. If we truly are concerned about affordable housing here in Missoula, we cannot continue to pass policies that cost the developers more and more money, that, that cost taxpayers more and more money with higher taxes and continue to say that we care about affordable housing. Eventually, we're going to have to make some sacrifices. Do we want the city of Missoula to be a picture-perfect city that you see on a postcard for tourism and a country club for the rich? Or do we want to be a city for all? And unfortunately, I think that this is a step in the completely wrong direction and I am not supportive of the, of any of the motions.
Ms. DeBary?
Thank you. I think from its inception, the point of this was to help set a new floor by raising the bar, as it were. And, and I believe that we've accomplished that through this multi-year effort. I think what was presented to us provides a strong foundation to work off of and it provides the flexibility to not just allow creativity, but to hopefully encourage it through a kind of rapport, a new rapport or culture that's developed through development services and working with the development community in this regard. I think it does a good job of reflecting all of the comments that we heard at the numerous public meetings, reflects the interests of many of the people who attended and provided comment, including the architecture community, the development community, regular citizens. And I think it reflects the years of professional experience brought forward from the consultant team and our staff. And, and I just really value the work that all those folks put into this. And I'll just name them. Wintering Company, Code Studio, and Urban Advisors. I think I got everybody. And I guess I would also be remiss if I didn't mention Emily, who, Ms. Brock, who brought forward this idea and asked us to strive for something different and better and to afford this community an opportunity to try to set a, a new tone for itself and, and hopefully it, it leaves room for the weird because I think nobody would want to reject an idea like the Wilma or the Florence. And I'm hopeful that the work that was put into this would, would not only allow that, but would foster those kinds of places. So I'm going to support this.
Mr. Hess?
Heard a quotation some years ago that's stuck in my mind. It was a corporate architect for Target, I believe. And he said that, "We're happy to design the store if the city doesn't design it for us." And I just thought that was a really interesting view into, into what the corporate architect brings to the table. So I think this is a great culmination of a lot of effort. I think it is complicated and nuanced and an appropriate action.
Ms. West?
I recently had an argument with my kids when I was in Bozeman on whether or not we were actually driving into a Walmart parking lot. I was right. But I did want to say that this isn't, I actually think, I'm, I'm in support of this and it'll be for all three motions, but these are design standards and I don't think that they can immediately be conflated with whether or not it generates affordable housing or not. I do think that there are some really excellent incentives in this, these standards that would revitalize some of our more car-centric corridors to include people and hopefully housing. And I look forward to, I'm sure it'll take a really long time for this to happen, but I look forward to those changes. And I think whatever affordable... And I think whatever affordable housing comes out of that is going to have to be an additional layer of intention, and we'll get there as well. So thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
It's late, and I'll make it brief, but I think it's important to note that it, there's lots of talk about affordable housing. If you were building a single-family home, this does not apply to you. And there is a lot of intentionality around where this overlay is being directed and, and implied. And I think that we saw through the presentation that there's also a lot of room for personal interpretation. The example that he showed with, you know, you can't put a window there, but maybe you want to put some artwork. I think that that is, I'm really excited to see the individual interpretations that will come out of that. And I think it will continue to reflect Missoula and its character. I often talk about how, you know, what is, what do we do at City Council? Well, we're the keeper of the, the secret recipe that keeps Missoula, Missoula. And I think that this is an important part of that, and I'm excited to see this. I think it's important, and I really appreciate the intentionality that has been put into this. I mean, this has been going on for three years, and I think it shows in the level of detail and the thoroughness of the presentation and the design guidelines. And I think that, you know, if you look at the map, where these places were being overlaid, there was a whole lot of white left on there. So I think that we are not big-handedly sweeping and changing everything. We're being very intentional, and I appreciate that, and I will be supporting this.
Ms. Herr.
So I, I think what I wanted to really point out, Lee and Laval and Ben in particular, is how you first talked about principles. And I can't remember if there was 10 or 12 of them, but somewhere's in that range. And principles, just to remind folks, are those universal concepts, those universal ideals that we all kind of live towards, whether it's we're talking about ethics or if we're talking about design. And below those are our standards and our guidelines. But one of the principles that caught my eye was engage the public realm. And I think that is really critical when we're talking about the particular corridors in the downtown area, that we're really trying to engage with the public. If you want to build your own house without any windows, so be it. But if you want to have and expect people to come into your, your commercial enterprise, your office building, your multifamily unit, you're going to expect people to be able to see in and be able to see out. And I think along those lanes, same lines, I want to commend you for the public process. I think you said there were roughly 4,000 people that were supposedly going to be affected by the changes. And of that, over 10% of the people that responded opted in. You know, when you think about a lot of public process, you don't get that much of a response. So it tells me that people really cared about this, about this issue. They showed up. And, and, and I understand, Mr. Gray, that you may disagree. And that, I, thank you, and I appreciate that. But I think by and large, most people really appreciate the flexibility that this whole process evolved into. And, and like we, someone else mentioned, I forget who to give credit to, but this, we can tweak this as time goes by. And lastly, I think I said this in committee once before, but it's worth repeating, as a visual person myself, to be able to have manuals that the, that the professionals in the field, be them architects or engineers, or, or general contractor, to be able to see those visually does save time, and it helps to really implement that creativity and that flexibility that we are really, truly trying to seek and preserve. So thank you all for that. I'm in support of all three motions.
Further discussion. Seeing some.
Can we add the other two motions to this one?
Can you what?
Mayor? I was just wondering if we could do all, all the motions at once. Could I move to?
No.
No.
All right. So seeing no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote on the motion.
All right. On the ordinance amending Title 20, Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Merritt?
Merritt.
Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. West? West votes yes. Von Lausberg? Von Lausberg votes yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. Vissera?
Yes.
Vissera votes yes. Kears?
Kears.
Kears votes no. Debary? Debary votes yes. And Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. We have got 10 yeses and two nos.
And the ordinance is approved. Ms. Debary.
I move that council adopt an ordinance to rezone certain properties to be included in the design excellence overlay zones as described in Exhibit A and referenced in Exhibit B.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. On the ordinance to rezone, Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. West? West votes yes. Von Lausberg? Von Lausberg votes yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. Vissera?
Yes.
Vissera votes yes. Kears?
Kears.
Kears votes no. Debary?
Yes.
Debary votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. We've got 10 yeses and two nos.
And the ordinance is approved. Ms. Debary.
I move that council adopt a resolution to adopt the Design Excellence Manual to be used in conjunction with, with the Design Excellence Overlay, generally 20.25.080, Title 20, Missoula Municipal Code, the City Zoning Ordinance.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a roll call vote. We've, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. On the resolution to adopt the Design Excellence Manual, Merritt?
Yes.
Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. West?
Yes.
West votes yes. Von Lausberg?
Yes.
Von Lausberg votes yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. Vissera?
Yes.
Vissera votes yes. Kears?
Yes.
Kears votes no. Debary?
Yes.
Debary votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. And Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. We have 10 yeses and two nos.
And the ordinance is approved. We have no additional public hearings this evening, nor are there any communications from the mayor. Will be in general comments from council members with Ms. Merritt. Ms. Harp? Ms. Anderson. Ms. West.
Excuse me, Ms. Harp?
Yes.
A and F?
Yes.
This week?
Come later.
Oh, later. Okay.
You pass. Mr. Hess. Mr. Ramos. Ms. Vissera. Ms. Von Lausberg. Ms. Kears.
I just wanted to remind you all of Wednesday, when I asked you all to have grace for the Public Safety and Health Committee report. So that's coming up, and I want full participation. So that's all. Just a plug for a few minutes from now. Thank you.
I think the yelling is really effective. Yeah. Ms. Jones. Mr. Debary. Ms. Armstrong. All right. We have no more of that stuff. We don't have any new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? What the, I missed committee reports?
That's what I was trying to say.
Good God, people, why can't you get it together during your committee meetings?
I'm telling you.
How did, hmm. Sorry. Oh, well, yes, there is. My apologies. Uh, we've got a committee report happening in public, uh, Public Safety and Health, as it turns out.
I move that we appoint Ross Miller as a regular member to the Health Board for the term commencing January 1st, 2019, and ending on December 31st, 2021. And I would like to speak to the motion. Please.
Ms. Kears.
Ages ago, known as 10:20 PM on December 17th, I sent you a memo written by Ellen Leahy, the Director and Health Officer of the Health Department, that she actually said to me last week, so I apologize for not sending it out earlier, where she describes with great detail the current composition of a health board and the role and expertise details of the incumbent city appointee. I think that she has done us great fever by giving us all a little bit more insight into the Health, Air Pollution, and Water Quality District Boards. And I recommend you read it, just, you know, light reading tomorrow morning, if you didn't have an opportunity to do so in the past hour and 29 minutes. And the thing that I wanted to highlight is that in the next, in less than 90 days, the Health Department is reapplying for accreditation. And governing board knowledge and involvement with accreditation standards, policies, and practices is a required and scored component for remaining accredited. Ross Miller is currently the longest-serving member of the Health Board and has been apparently a driving force behind the accreditation process. And so I think for that reason alone, notwithstanding the other many valuable assets he brings, we should appoint him. And I hope he'll vote with me in favor of the motion.
Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Von Lausberg.
Totally supportive of the motion. I just wanted to mention that we had two other really good candidates, and I'm excited to know that there are some opportunities for them if they are interested to work on some committees with the Health Board, and it would be a great opportunity for them to become more familiar and kind of bilateral vetting of themselves and their experience with the Health Board, and could make for great potential future board members.
Further discussion? Seeing none, there's no one here to comment. We'll have a, we can do a voice vote on this one. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I counted to 12, Kirsten. Uh, we don't have any more committee reports, do we?
I have something to read.
All right. We'll, we'll be back in my confused order. Apparently, I turn into a pumpkin at about 11 o'clock. Ms. Harp, you want to say something about your committee schedule?
Yes, please. So there was a slight misunderstanding in my committee. What we would like to do is discuss the auditor selection on January 9th instead of this week Wednesday, just due to some staffing concerns. It's a five-minute, which I think parks, you can have those five minutes if you'd like on Wednesday. Just want everybody to know.
Thank you. Any other, Ms. Ladies, communications petitions and/or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, ladies and gentlemen, I am grateful for your service. We will be adjourned.